All right, it is seven o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just looking at that flag. We're gonna have to get a new flag soon. Um, all right. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Perschmann.
I'll second.
Uh, second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Do not see anyone here for community comments. No presentations and reports, no public hearings. Moving on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Motion by Councilmember Perschmann and a second by Councilmember Welch. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, business items, eight point one, the fund balance policy. Ms. Shutey, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight I am going to be talking about two different new policies or amended policies. The first one I'll be talking about is the fund balance policy. Um, we currently have a fund balance policy. The reason we're looking at it tonight is um, a couple of updates. Um, as we were working through our long-term financial plan um, with Northland Securities in 2023, we were talking about, you know, financial strength, and that's also one of our strategic priorities. And what can we do to make sure that we are working toward that um, strategic priority? And so really firming up our fund balance policy was one of those. And so calling out some of those um, items in the fund balance policy, we talk about uh, removing our special um, capital fund. And why is that? Because when bond aid- aid- rating agencies are looking at that um, you know, quote slush fund, you know, we're not allocating that for something that we need. Um, it's more so just kind of sitting there and waiting for something to happen. Um, so this language in the new fund balance policy is allocating every fund for a purpose. Um, so I- and then there's also some other language in here that was changed. Um, I'll just kind of outline it a little bit and then we can, I'll answer questions if you have questions. Um, I don't want to read through the whole policy. Um, I, I know that you guys probably had time to look at it. So there are clear definitions for fund balance classifications and procedures. I added a section for types of funds, so we weren't um, calling out debt funds. Um, and then capital equipment funds, that wasn't in the old one. And so I wanted to make sure that we were defining all of those types of funds in there. Um, and then again, we eliminated the special capital fund because now we're giving council options. When we have that um, unassigned fund balance at the end of a year, if we do, council has the option to do many things, you know, we lay that out in this fund balance, fund balance policy. What do you want to do? Do you want to assign it to capital equipment? You know, it's laid out in this fund balance policy. And then we also revise the language anywhere that it said city manager to finance director where it is applicable. Um, so these policy, this policy was completely reviewed by Dave Anderson and also one of his colleagues who does a lot with different municipalities. So I am happy to answer questions on any sections or how we came up with different things if you guys have that, so.
Any questions?
I have a question and um, on the classification. And I like that there's examples, but there's one example that I still couldn't, I correlated with something that we've maybe seen at co- at council. The second one, the restricted?
Mm-hmm.
What, is there been something recently or like, is there something tangible that's a?
Yes.
Debt covenants, grants earned but not yet spent?
Yeah, so that would be like, um, for instance, probably the um, like if we get that levy money for the, or um, the turnback funds, you know, we know we're gonna use that for specific, a specific project. So we're restricting that to the, only using it for that project.
So in the past, they had sat in a special capital fund?
Um.
Or just prevents that from happening?
It just prevents it from being spent otherwise. It's just um, at the end of every year, the auditors will ask us, what amounts of money do we have? And we have to label them as non-spendable, restricted, committed, and assigned. And so just so you know what those amounts are, we have to lay it out in our fund balance policy. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I know we're trying to move to a double A plus rating. Is that correct? From double A?
Yes.
Okay, and it, Northland, they've reviewed this and this is something they think will be amenable towards getting us there? Is that, is that what I heard you say when you mentioned the bond rating?
Their suggestion was to eliminate the special capital fund um, and making sure that our fund balance policy you know, states more so that we're moving toward a, our capital equipment fund and our long-term financial plan and the goals that we have in there, rather than just having a kind of a slush fund. Um, because the rating agency is going to see that we are planning out ten years rather than just putting it into a what-if fund. Yeah.
So this accomplishes that?
Yep.
That's it.
No questions, I don't have any. Um, Lynn, just so that I understand procedurally, instead of the money automatically going into special capital, this will be an annual process after the audit where we will have the option of saying, here's door number one, two, three, and four. Where do we want the money to go?
That's correct.
Awesome. All right, um, I will then make a motion to approve amendments to the fund balance policy.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, thank you. Um, up next, the purchasing policy. Ms. Shutey?
All right, so we've had a lot of discussion on purchasing over the time that I've been here. And so it just felt right um, to go ahead and, I've been working on this policy with Dave Anderson. And um, you know, all of the department heads work together when we're doing our budgets. We work with Brent on the budget. Anything that involves purchasing or money is in this purchasing policy. And the larger purchases get confusing. Um, sometimes even the medium to mid-size purchases get confusing. Are they budgeted? You know, what do we do if they're not budgeted? Do we have to go to council? So just really clearing up that language in this policy, I think is going to be very helpful. Um, so again, Dave Anderson and his colleague helped um, really clear that up. They put headings on the intermediate purchases. That's telling us that that's between ten and twenty thousand. Um, so then when, you know, staff is looking at that, there's no question, oh yeah, that's between ten and twenty thousand. Um, and then same with the small purchases. Um, we've cleared up some language on the contracts. It's professional service contracts. Um, just letting us know that you don't, you don't have to go out for two quotes for that. That's just a municipal um, statute that you don't have to do that. So lot of language clearing up in here. Um, we added some sections in here, made it um, took some out of the employee handbook and added it in here for employee meals and refreshments. That just makes more sense in here because you're purchasing things. Um, removal again of the city clerk, just some language. And then um, new requirements. I added some new requirements and created some forms. So we have a lot of receipts that'll go missing sometimes when people are using their credit cards. I don't know if you guys have any experience with that. But just to keep things really clear and a paper trail for the auditors, um, I recreated, created a missing receipt affidavit. Then, you know, the staff or the employee who is using that credit card doesn't have to feel ashamed or anything. And they can just fill out the affidavit, hand it in to us, and then we have the paper trail as well. Um, and then also a credit card user agreement. I want all of the employees who are issued a credit card to know, you know, what that, what that really means. You know, if you're making purchases, it's, you know, you can't use it to get cash. You have read the purchasing policy, you know, because we have had a few different things um, you know, over the last year. But, so I just really wanted to formalize this policy, make it something that all staff really follows closely and that it's easier to read. So again, I'll outline kind of the main things here. So additional language on contracts, the clarification of threshold languages in the small and medium-sized purchases, um, new employee requirements in the credit card section. And then I added employee training and development as well. Um, just talking about how they can get reimbursed for some of that or how the city pays for that. Um, again, this hasn't been updated since 2020 and it has been reviewed by the city attorney. So happy to answer any questions on this one as well.
Any questions? I think it's well-written.
Good, good job.
You thought of everything you feel like in here, so. Great. I will then make a motion to approve amendments to the purchasing policy.
I'll second.
By Mayor Johnson, second by uh, Councilmember Perschmann. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, zooming right through, Mr. Merrick, communications.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple of updates to share since we did have a work session tonight. First of all, the Public Services Department is planning on removing the skate park equipment in community parks starting tomorrow. Uh, we sent a notice out on social media and the website. Um, and then just added a note that uh, kind of per the council's last discussion that throughout 2024, we'll be talking about what to use, what to, how to use that future space in the interim. Uh, we plan on trying to create a leisure ring during the winter months and then we'll have, continue the conversation into the uh, 2025 budget season. Uh, the tennis and basketball court uh, project at Lions Park is funded in the 2024 budget. Uh, just kind of based on their current scheduling and just the overall cost of the project. Um, Public Services has volunteered to do the removals for that project. So it'll save us about twenty thousand dollars uh, by doing the uh, court and fence removal uh, for the site. So we plan on getting that started on Monday. Um, and then giving ourselves some time this week to do a community outreach on that. Just letting people know that those courts will be down. Uh, that hopefully puts us in the best position to uh, get that project bid and constructed so that it can be used um, during the kind of operational months, if you will, so. Uh, the Parks Team, so that's a combination of kind of admin staff and the Public Services staff have been working for several months on a concept to add some parking at Bluff Park. So if you can think of the north side of the lot, kind of uh, kind of butts up to the Fish and Wildlife area. Uh, so a concept for kind of, in essence, kind of a class five or gravel parking lot that could add. I think we had up to fifty spaces. Fifty-three spaces, so trying to alleviate some pressure off of those adjoining neighborhood roads. And so Chad and Paul and Brenda Good, um, Eric Madigan, kind of the whole of the Parks Team, Aaron Smith have been working on that. So we hope to bring that to a work session to um, have you get a line of sight to that. We feel like it's gonna, could have be a high-impact and relatively low-cost project where our, again, our own team would um, do the construction end of that. So um, looking forward to having that conversation with you.
Can I ask one question on that? Um, does, are we losing soccer fields then? So plan for the same amount of fields down there that we have now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Um, everything would be on the north side of that old football field, goalpost.
Okay.
So um, uh, plans to bring in Peter Leatherman uh, to do the presentation of the 2024 Community Survey in February. So again, that's kind of an overview of the survey process and that he usually brings a set of draft questions and then opportunity for the council to, to kind of design-build additional questions um, and then kind of go from there. So it'll be a newer process, I think, for at least Councilmember Perschmann and Welch. But I think the balance of you went through the first community survey that we did a number of years ago. Um, another pretty big topic, we're planning on uh, having our friends from Scott County uh, present on the Miriam Junction Trail Project at your second uh, work session in February. One of the things, I think, well, two bigger things. One, they have communicated that they uh, won't be needing the space for our current public utilities or PU building is downtown. So um, I would say silver lining to that is like that, that space uh, will be preserved for our own public works or public services needs. At one point, they were contemplating using that space um, as a kind of a lay-down construction area. And that's no longer the case. Um, they are still kind of formulating kind of construction and kind of mobilization plans. The one thing um, that you're gonna hear more about is kind of how they plan to construct the overall project and then what kind of corresponding impacts that might have to Riverside Park. And one of the things that I've, that was of particular interest, at least to me and I think probably the community is there's, um, and this is a broad overview, but essentially they're gonna be narrow- narrowing down the river uh, kind of through Carver for constructability of this bridge. So it lets us for um, general numbers, say the river's fifty feet wide. Uh, it might be narrowed down to ten feet wide. And so it, in order for them to do their construction through the piece. And so uh, an outcome of that is gonna make the um, boat launch kind of unusable during that stretch because you in essence would have to portage your boat into the navigable waters of the river. And again, there'll be more details of that, of kind of what's going on. But they initially um, are, are contemplating bringing construction traffic from Depot Park kind of into Riverside Park and then to access uh, the river. As opposed to their initial request was to come down Broadway and bring all their construction traffic, which uh, and they've been great partners, but you know, um, it is, I would offer a kind of a generational type of project along with our hopefully generational project. And so um, this will be kind of our first toe in the water, if you will, no pun intended, on um, kind of working with them and kind of understanding uh, what they're proposing and how it works with our plans, et cetera, and how you want the community to be involved and notified and kind of all the, the moving parts and pieces to that. We're um, hoping to get kind of a draft of their presentation early enough where we can get it to even before the council packet goes out, so you can kind of uh, take that in. But um, their project is moving pretty quickly. So I'm expecting that uh, you know, somewhere even by like the fall of this year, you might start to see some type of activity, you know, potentially tree, tree clearing. But um, you know, by no later than probably spring of twenty-five, probably, you know, significant activities, so. And uh, the engineering team with both that I make is really working hard on making sure that our two projects fit together. Uh, because if you think of impacts to that area at Riverside Park and the downtown and then you, and if you don't think about the levy and those same types of impacts, you're doing the community a disservice, so they're trying to kind of connect those uh, two pieces together. So a lot of information coming your way on the twentieth.
Can I ask you one thing for clarification? When you say the narrowing of the river, that's just during the construction time, correct? Or are they?
Well, the construction period is, at this point, like several, like, I think they're, on the high side, I think they're planning like twenty-four months. So like, you know, this is multiple construction seasons. Again, this is, they're gonna bring in more details than it might have been tinkered with, but you know, there are multiple stages. And this is just to access like the project adjacent to Carver, like the Carver Bridge. Um, and not anything, you know, toward the Scott County side. Um, and I'm not a construction expert or know like the intricacies of what they're doing. Um, but they did, Chad, you were on that call too. They were talking like twenty-four months worth of stuff.
Okay. Is Marty Walsh gonna be at that meeting too? Or does the, does that part?
Marty Walsh has been on the, on these calls. He won't be, he's not, uh, we're not planning to have him there and just be uh, Scott County as the lead and then our, our team.
Okay. And Marty Walsh is the Carver County Parks Director? Anyone doesn't know who he is, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then uh, Brenda's been working on a little project. Brenda, if you could share some of the details with the council, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, we, Civic Plus or Civic Engage is our current website platform. And they offered a special on um, some of their products, fifty percent off um, if we subscribe by the end of the year. So I checked into a couple of the products that they had. Civic Ready is their mass notification solution. Um, it's very similar to our Gov Delivery notification system, but it is part of the Civic Engage family, so it actually integrates much better. Um, it, um, my experience with Civic Engage has been phenomenal. They have a great um, help center. They're very responsive. They have great um, help resources. And through this Civic Ready application, we would have unlimited multi-channel messaging across text, emails, social media, and then also the website. Um, we would have unlimited subscribers and we could set up geo-targeting messaging, scheduled alerts, things like that. So in my opinion, it's a more robust form of Gov Delivery. And um, to give you a little flavor, we've had some hiccups with the Gov Delivery in December with it randomly deleting subscribers, so I feel like the timing is fantastic. Um, so I'm looking forward to that. So within that, um, we had similar capabilities in Civic or Gov Delivery to set up different topics. Um, we just brainstormed a couple new ones that we could expand on, including resident alerts, uh, community events, resident engagement as far as um, winter parking, budget guide, um, consumer confidence reports, things like that. So as we move forward with this, um, we're gonna work with Civic in, uh, Civic Engage to create those. There's virtually no setup time involved with it. It's really integrated and it's a pretty minimal process. There's no setup fees with it. And the best news is that um, it's also a cost savings for us. So Gov Delivery costs us about seven thousand dollars annually. And Civic Ready for the first year will cost us two thousand dollars and then four thousand dollars second year upwards. So I'm, I think there's a lot of enhancements to what we have. We have good experience with our website um, hosts and um, I'm looking forward to using this opportunity to expand our options for communicating with our residents.
I have a question for you. So Lynn, if you're, if it's gonna go email, text, and you said it can go to social media and all those, um, a text message often looks very different from what you would post on social media. Is it one thing that you bump out to go to all of them or does it get set up differently to bump out to the different?
Well, we haven't gotten into those details, but on Gov Delivery, um, we can use that, that text. We have quite a few subscribers that get a text, including myself. So I'll get a text that says there's a packet ready for review and then I click the link and it takes me directly to the website.
I'm gonna say that if, you know, when you get a text message, it's pretty short usually and so Facebook tends to be a little bit. So I just didn't know if all the messages were gonna come out exactly the same or?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's not gonna be like a text message from your dad where it's like? If my dad texts, I hope you're not watching. Yeah, no, I just didn't, I just didn't know if it was like you sent out one blip and it just hit everything? Or if you can, or you can modify that?
I know with Gov Delivery, we send out one blip and it goes out either email or text or whatever. But I don't know exactly what it'll look like on Civic Engage. I don't recall from the demo what they had said.
Okay.
Brenda, how do we get the text? Like, how do we get people's phone numbers? Did I share that with you when I signed up for a water bill thirteen years ago?
No, so um, we create lists off of different things.
Okay.
Ultimately, we took all the councils and the commissions and set everybody up. And then when you get a notification at the very bottom, it tells you on there that you can subscribe to additional topics.
Okay.
Um, so people have done it that way. We promoted it heavily, like at an open house when we had done it. Um, and then uh, Facebook posts and things like that. It's just a tool that I could, we could um, use more frequently too. So this is a great opportunity to integrate it with our website. It'll just save a lot of time compared to what we currently have. Okay?
Yeah, uh, easier to use and low cost sounds like a winner to me.
It better not be too good to be true.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, and then the last thing, uh, Chad's gonna provide a water resources update. Before Chad gets into the specifics, you know, you're gonna notice a couple of things that he's sharing. Our plan is to con- continue the conversation. I, one of the lessons learned from our team here, you know, after we've put out this water communication, uh, the feedback that we got is like, I think we um, were undercommunicating our work on this. That this work is daily and so like, you know, it's the first meeting of the year, trying to get back into the analogy groove. But like, I think of like, like math in elementary school, like you can get the answer, but if you don't show your work, you know, you don't get credit for it. And so like, I think we have to do more showing our work and telling people how we're operating the system because we're, we're looking at the things that we've communicated in that water report on a daily basis. And we have, you know, weekly meetings on how to like, make the system better. It's an ongoing, it's a kind of a living thing, if you will. And I think, you know, unwritely so, but I think the, a community narrative exists that the only reason that some of these things were done was because people complained. And I think the motive, the response to the complaints or the concerns was the impetus to show our work. And so are there other things that we can do? Yes, but um, I think understanding that this has been continuous and needs to be continuous, that this is a, a problem we're working, working to resolve. This is continuous work to get stronger and build the relationship. Um, and so you'll, you'll see some of that kind of weave within some of the things that Chad's talking about here tonight. Chad?
So the, the latest plan is this Thursday, we're gonna start hydrant flushing in the northwest quadrant. That's where we've um, isolated or um, located a, a couple of valves that have been closed. So with a closed valve, you have two dead ends which can decrease water quality. So we are going to do a um, a little different practice than we've had in the past. We're gonna do a directional flushing. So we're gonna close some valves, flush um, fresh water into the system and then flush it again the other direction to make sure that all of that um, old water is out of the system. Um, we're gonna do some um, I guess uh, sandwich boards, a little more marketing. Um, sandwich board signs on Monroe, Ironwood, White Pine Way and Edgebrook just to notify. But some of the people that we've heard in the past don't get the text messages and the emails or don't look at social media. Um, so we want to make sure that we get as many people notified as possible. Um, we'll increase our communication with the neighborhood HOA groups, just so that they're aware of it as well, the website and social media posting. And then going forward, we're gonna revise our hydrant flushing frequency or the frequently asked questions. We already have a document out there. We reviewed it this afternoon and uh, I think we, we can add some information to it.
Like, one of the things we discuss that's kind of a byproduct of hydrant flushing is if folks have filters in their home and they go through a flushing cycle, there's gonna be a unintended consequence of that filter having uh, that flush of, of water. So we thought that would be a good one to add to the, to the FAQ. And just a, a little note that, you know, council had a nice conversation about this and we talked about it as a group related to door hangers and just, we started talking about the amount of people power it was gonna take to do that. We were gonna spend more time notifying folks and like actually getting the hydrants flushed. And so um, we, we think that we can accomplish this. Is it just as good as doing door hangers? No, but um, it just felt overwhelming when we actually were gonna like physically have to do it. So um, kind of in line with some of the conversations the council was having, uh, we're gonna refrain from doing that and dispon these outlets. And frankly, we think we can, that might be better, like establishing good um, two-way communication with leadership and our residential HOAs that, you know, we're calling them and communicating with them and they can be a resource rather than kind of this indiscriminate fire. Maybe building those relationships in the end is maybe a, a stronger tool for what we need to accomplish going forward.
And then number two, the monthly water testing data report. We're actually um, just created a document right now. What we do is, it's handwritten numbers on a monthly sheet. That goes, you know, we um, fill it in each day and then it goes into a folder at the water plant. Um, now we're distributing it more, so we made it digital. We're just trying to figure out the, the best way to have everybody to, to have access to that. So that'll be coming up and then we're gonna um, modify the process and get a little bit more specific on location. If it's at the water plant or the distribution system and just have kind of all of that on one master water. If it's at the water plant or the distribution system and just have kind of all of that on one master water testing sheet that's digital, digital. Um, other community-based updates and information, we're going to be doing, um, some low-flow dead-end flushing, just to kind of turn over that water on some of those areas that haven't been developed or on a dead end. So some cul-de-sacs and, um, um, like in Copper Hills neighborhood. Um, we also purchased.
Can I jump in there, Chad? Just, you know, the, that note, that letter B refers to within the report, think of it as like, uh, the facilities rental monthly report or prime or building inspections. We'll have the data, but then they'll, or Lynn's finance report of a couple of other bullets or maybe like a tip for the month. Uh, that we can include in that monthly water report at your second meeting. That could easily, like, it'll be in the packet, but we could easily reproduce it into, you know, the website, social media, uh, email pieces. Because the concerns have kind of went from like the plant to what's it like in the distribution system. And so we, we test for that. And so, you know, again, showing our work, we're going to show the folks that, um, what we're going to be doing now is just creating the format to do that rather than just because councilmember Pershman asked, we'll get it to him first, but then the rest of you didn't know to ask. So we want to create transparency and consistency. And it's not just the folks that were curious have the information. Cause then we're relying on them to share that information. So we want to make sure it's accessible, consistent, um, and isn't stagnant, meaning that it's going to be updated. And if we see current or trending issues that we can update it and continue that conversation.
And then number three, we purchased a, uh, copperly automatic hydrant flusher. So this, uh, device, um, you hook onto a fire hydrant, you chain it to it. It runs off of a nine-volt battery. It will flush, there's varying gallons per minute, but like on those dead ends, we don't want to stir up the system and scour it and, and move that sediment. We're just trying to turn the water over. So, um, the flow is adjustable and it, and it's on a timer. So we can really set it and forget it. Um, but unfortunately it's not a cold weather, uh, approved device. So we are going to have to manually have somebody go out there and low-flow flush those fire hydrants on the dead ends.
During the winter.
During the winter, yes. And we'll work with some of the residents to, to, you know, talk with and see how, if it's a weekly thing or twice a month or monthly, see what works best for them. And then, uh, we did notice in the system, um, the guys found probably four or five hydrants with the caps open and uh, taken off of there. So we're assuming people are still, contractors are still using fire hydrants for a water source. And they're usually in those remote kind of new developments where it's easy to pull up, fill up and drive away. So, um, I know Brett reached out to the Dave Anderson, the city attorney, just to figure out how we can combat this.
Yeah, we, uh, actually found, uh, Center City, which is I think a north metro suburb, has an ordinance that makes, uh, illegal use of a hydrant a misdemeanor. So.
It's like a felony. We're throwing the flag. Throw me the key.
But it's, uh, you know, 90 days in jail or a thousand dollar fine. And will they actually get that?
What do you think?
No, but I think if that ordinance was in place, you know, then there's some messaging that we can do, some, maybe it's some signage on some of these pieces, but it's, you know, as we all know, this work is hard enough, but it gets even harder when, uh, folks are out there that are kind of working against what we're all trying to accomplish. And accessing hydrants illegally, um, disrupts the system and then impacts residents. And so we just can't have that, um, at the rate that it's going. Um, and so.
Social media posts, it's a little wanted poster.
Right. And so, well, Chad.
Yes, wanted.
Water pirates.
Yes.
Yeah, there you go.
Chad had a really good idea related to that and just, um, you know, once we get that in place to like, um, encourage residents if they see people connected to a hydrant to snap a photo and send it in. Um, because it's the, the hydrants that we're finding that are being impacted. It's not an accident that they're located in areas that are kind of at the far reaches of our infrastructure. So it almost makes you feel a little bit worse because they're doing it intentionally and they know they shouldn't be. Um, so if we all work together on this, I think we'll, um, get to where we want to go.
So can we have that sooner than later? So we have teeth sooner than later?
Yeah, like Dave is working on it. I, you know, I mean, it's the, the Senator City example is maybe five or six sentences, but I don't, I can't imagine it should take that long to, to put together.
So then the, an officer can drive up and see this and give a ticket or if we have proof, video camera?
Yeah, they get, I don't know if they would get a ticket more, they would probably write a report and then submit that report to the county attorney's office for, um, charges.
Oh, gotcha. Sounds serious. 90 days.
It would be, I would like to know though, if we could have almost like a finder's reward or like how they have for like turning poachers.
Do you know? I, I kind of like the water pirate more.
That'd be up to the, we can check with Dave, but you know, that could be a policy of the council, yeah.
And then, um, is there something that could be put with, um, the, when we're early in a development plan with the builder's agreement?
Developers agreement, yep. Yep. We plan on adding that as a provision or highlighting that.
I think that would really give it some teeth.
The problem is, is if they subcontract.
Exactly. Yeah. But at least if somebody that would, they would be responsible and, and they'd be incented to help.
Mm-hmm.
I'd also like to look into putting signage out. If we know where these like frequently hit hydrants are on the outer reaches, like.
We're watching you.
Trespassing sign or something or a notice of no hunting or, you know, a lot of DNR similarities here.
Chad, is there any kind of sensor on a SCADA system or a wireless SCADA that would tell us that a pressure drop from an open hydrant? Anything that sensitive?
There are electronic hydrants that will sense, uh, you know, if somebody's tampering with it, but nothing that we currently have.
Is it cost prohibitive? Do we have any idea with this kind of things?
I could, I could check on it for you.
Don't spend too much time?
Yeah.
It would.
That's a lot of fire hydrants.
We have a lot of fire hydrants. I saw the map. Yeah.
Good idea, but I don't think that'll be very cheap for us. Um, thank you for the update. I do like your showing our work analogy. I like all of your analogies, but I think that's a really good one because you're right.
Yeah.
Most all.
Yeah.
Um, you're right. We have been doing this, but I think it's important to pull back the curtain because folks want to know that this wasn't a flash in the pan, that this wasn't a huge focus point just before Christmas. And now we're just living our lives like there's no issue. So I think it's going to be a continuous process and I appreciate you guys continuing to, with the blood, sweat and tears into it. And then, so just being a little bit proactive, uh, we are releasing water into the streets and it's getting below 32 at night. Are we planning to throw some salt down so that we don't get the calls about having icy roads now?
Yes, we already kind of talked about that and we'll spot salt as needed.
Okay.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong here, Chad, but a lot of this is going to go directly into the storm sewer too.
Yeah, well, we have diffusers which we can direct off and pavement temperatures. If it's sunny out and still 28, the pavement's probably above freezing. So it, it should dry before it gets icy. But, um, a lot of the low-flow dead-end flushing, we will discharge directly into a catch basin.
Actually updates. Council updates. You want to go first?
Gosh, I have no, no updates from the last meeting.
All right. Lori?
I don't have updates either.
Kristy?
Okay.
You passed.
I do. Um, one, I was going to ask, do we have an HPC meeting coming up this month?
It's going to be canceled.
It will be. Okay. Um, we just released tonight the Soggy Bottom, uh, 15 recipient. Um, so we have, um, Zach and it's, I believe it's Prataponima. Um, he's the assistant fire chief in the city of Chaska. Um, he also is part of the Carver County, um, where's it? The Carver County Fire Academy. So uh, all over the county, he goes out and he trains, uh, firefighters as they come into service. And he has probably trained half of our Carver Fire Department. So he unfortunately was at the age of 31, has been diagnosed with stage three cancer, um, polyhazard. So he has a wife and a, um, couple of young kids. So we are going to be raising money for the Soggy Bottom for him and his family this year. Um, it's Saturday, uh, was it September? Wrong event. Um, Saturday, January 27th and it's down at Riverside from 11 to 2. Um, Eventbrite is up if you should choose to buy tickets or to donate. So that's ready to go. Um, and then you'll just start to see more information coming out about it. That's all I have on that one.
All right. Great.
Uh, nothing for me either.
All right. Couple of quick updates, um, from me. The week before Christmas, I met with, uh, Sally Fox from Emmer's office. She was in town. Kristy, you came to getaway while we were there and you got to meet Sally. Um, she just wanted to kind of, she is, uh, Tom Emmer's, I think she's his chief of staff. She was in town from DC and just was going around and meeting with folks from the district that he represents. Um, we spent a good amount of time talking about mail service and kind of the, the stresses that Carver experienced in our system, uh, during last month and kind of perennially lately. Um, and, um, she shared with me that, um, we were not alone. We're not the only folks from Emmer's district who, um, have been sharing that. They wrote, I think it was probably the Thursday before Christmas. They sent a letter to the Postmaster General and I was like, okay, so what, what's that going to do? Like really here, people are not getting their mail. What good is a letter going to do? But apparently when they write, and it was a letter from all of the, uh, Republican representatives in the state of Minnesota, when they write a letter to the Postmaster General, they have to respond and address the issues that are in there. So, um, still not sure if or when we'll notice any difference here in Carver, but, um, the wheels are turning in that and that's something that they're well aware of. Um, also, uh, the week before Christmas, I, along with, um, Erin and Todd from our engineering team, went to the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District meeting. Um, I had not been there. I think the first time I was there was in 2020 and then, uh, was back in 2021. And, um, when we originally met, we hadn't been very successful in finding what then we were calling funding partners for the levy project. Um, so we went there and I kind of went there with my handout in 2021 and they said, we'll give you a hundred thousand dollars. But we want to give you $75,000 now and then 20 when that project is done. Cause they wanted us to prove that we could get it done and make progress. And that's a fair way of hedging their bet. When I went there on December 20th, um, I was able to say, listen, we have raised close to $9 million towards this project. Would it be possible if we got that remaining $25,000 sooner rather than later? So they agreed to it and, uh, we will be kind of complete with that commitment from the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District sooner rather than later. So that should be coming through hopefully. I don't know how quickly the wheels move on that kind of thing, but hopefully in the next weeks or months. So, um, that was a big win and really exciting going into the holidays. So other than that, uh, I think that's it for me. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
A motion by Councilmember Welch?
I'll second.
A second by Councilmember Sarah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Good evening.